Welcome to the City Commission meeting this April 15, 2025. Shh, 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 shh. I want to thank you all for being here. It's a lovely day. Everyone wants to be outside, so hopefully we'll have an early meeting tonight. I want to thank you all again for being here. And for those of you who are here for the first time, welcome. And our format is that we begin with a pledge of allegiance and then we share a moment of silence and then we go into presentations in which we recognize individual events or organizations that are important and significant to the people of our community. So let me first ask you all to please rise and join Carly Boynton and myself, who's a fifth grade student at North Andrews Garden Elementary. And Carly, if you could please join me at the podium so we can recite the pledge together.
Got it. Stand a little closer and put your hand on your heart. Go ahead. I-
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice. Thank you so much. Kate, thank you so much, Carly. We appreciate it. Can we take our picture together? Come on. You want to bring your mom and your family up here? Come on, come on up here. Come on, you all come up.
Thank you.
Want me to take a picture?
Sure.
Are they with you?
My mom-
Tell them to come on up here.
Come up.
Come on, mom.
She's beautiful.
She's shy.
Not at all.
Get that off her face.
Very nice, thank you. Very nice to meet you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good job.
Now I'd like you all to join me in having this moment of silence and also I'd like to acknowledge the very important friend of our community, Richard Ellis, who recently passed away. Just like to depart a little bit and announce some recent retirements of people who have worked with our city. These are long-term employees. There are five folks tonight. Todd Hill, who was with our police department for 29 years. Thank you for your service, Todd. Also Rafael Bouet, also a police officer with us 22 years. Somar Lopez, another police officer who's been with us 16 years. Sebastian Tough, who's a driver engineer with our fire department, 38 years. Amazing, thank you. Started in 1986. Wow. And Mark Kayata, who's the captain with our fire department, been with us 31 years. Thank you all for your service, everybody. All right. So Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Herbst. Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Here.
Mayor Trentalles.
Here. We have complete attendance. Couple of agenda announcements. CM 9 is being removed from the agenda for now and we have a walk-on motion regarding the Panther request to cosponsor the Florida Panthers 2025 Playoff Baptist Health Iceplex Events and giving her the authority to approve in her discretion the putting up of banners in our city streets. Okay, now, having said that, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Moved.
Second.
As amended.
As amended.
Yep. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Herbst. Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes. Don't we have any minutes to approve?
Not today.
Not yet. Oh, man. Has Commissioner Glassman not reviewed them yet?
I wanted to give him a week off.
That's really fine. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good.
Thank you.
So let us begin with our presentations. Our first presentation tonight, I would like, is to be recognizing New River Middle School Eco Sharks, Eco Sharks in Action, Magical Mangroves Presentation. It's to be presented by Eleonora Marini, Pilar LaVerte, Micah Adderley, and Nate Buck. Who's going to be orchestrating that from the city? You folks want to come up? Come on up. Tell us a little bit about what Eco Sharks in Action is about. And you need to push the, yeah, Ben. Yep.
Good evening. My name is Pilar LaVerte.
Yeah, you're good. You're good.
And I'm the president of the Eco Sharks Environmental Club at River Middle School. Today I would like to introduce my peers, Eleonora Mariani, Nate Buck, and Micah Adderley. They will be talking about a special project that we have here going on at River that we'd like your collaboration on. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Eleonora and this is Nate. And we are here to ask for support on our Magical Mangroves Living Shoreline project that we have going on in the back of our school. Nate, do you want to explain what a living shoreline is?
Thank you, Eleonora. So, hi, I'm Nate. Some people may ask, what is a living shoreline exactly? Well, a living shoreline, as the name suggests, is a shoreline that's full of life, greenery, nature, et cetera. These living shorelines provide many different benefits for both the community and benefit from our living shorelines. Our living shorelines are the key to saving the environment. Mangroves are the main part of our living shoreline. They provide many different benefits for the ocean, including stopping storm surge, flooding, and even protection against hurricanes, which can help the entire community.
Hi. Okay, so what have we done to make this dream a reality? So Phase One was completed last summer and consisted of placing repurposed various fields and also placing mangrove planters, which we will eventually plant mangroves in, where our seawall currently is. To clarify, our seawall is still there, but the vision is for it to disappear and be replaced with our magical mangroves. So that's a little bit of Phase One, but what is to be done? Why are we here? So our next phase, Phase Two, will consist of adding, of actually planting these mangroves into the mangrove planters and that's going to cost upwards of $50,000. So, big numbers. Also, we're going to plan, we're planning on adding an outdoor classroom. The outdoor classroom is probably one of the most valuable things for our community because any teacher can tell you that being out on the field is worth a million textbooks because you can talk all you want about ecosystems and how these things interact with each other, but actually seeing them in action and seeing how they actually interact with each other and studying these birds, studying these manatees, these turtles, really gives you that understanding that you wouldn't be able to get from just a regular old textbook. So that's that. Also, another benefit is that it's going to bring greatness. It's, our shoreline is going to be open to the public during non-school hours, of course, for safety reasons, and it's going to really help inform the public about what's going on. So that's that, and that's why we're here. We're here to seek support. So if the commission cannot provide us funding, is there any other support that the commission can grant us? And also, do you have any suggestions on where we can go to get this funding? Because we really want to see this dream come true. It'd be awesome for a lot of the teachers. They've been working on this a very long time and it's just going to be so fulfilling if we actually get this done. So we just want to see Florida and mostly Broward be inspired by what we're doing and also maybe want to do it where they are at and just reap the benefits on our community, which Nate was specifying. So thank you and good night.
Wait a minute.
Awesome.
So does anyone from the commission have any questions of any of these folks? Ben?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for being here. I'm Ben and I represent the area where New River Middle is. And so when I was last on the commission, maybe seven years ago, six years ago, we started talking about the living shoreline. And so this was with some of your teachers and your previous principal and we were all working together to bring together the state and other entities to all work together. So you all have taken kind of some of the ideas and initial planning we did and actually done it, which is awesome. So great, great work. So thank you. And this is something that I know, speaking myself and I think the mayor of the commission and they'll share their thoughts, but this is something we're very much supportive of, very interested in. And we've been working across the city to plant more mangroves. And in fact, we have right now several nonprofit organizations that not only provide mangroves but help plant them. So I think we could partner with them absolutely to get donations to help make that possible. And then from a funding standpoint, I think absolutely it'd be very interesting to see how we can support you.
Yes, so we just submitted for a NOAA fund as well. And what you were saying about the trees, on Arbor Day, for Arbor Day, like Earth Week, we're going to be planting trees, our club, and we're going to be planting trees that's also going to contribute to our mangrove. So yes, that would definitely be awesome if we can partner with some of these nonprofit organizations for the mangroves because, as I said, it's a pretty big number that we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as Eco Sharks, we are mainly focused on helping the environment and making sure that we can just benefit from it, that we can use our power as a school to be able to help the community, help the environment, and eventually help the world, right? We're just trying to make the environment better, one step at a time.
You got me sold. I'm on it. And I love that you're like, we need money to do this. So I love you're not like playing around. So awesome.
And if I might add, first of all, just listening to you as students in our community, it's really encouraging. I'm so optimistic about the future when I hear you folks talk, the way you talk and what you know. So congratulations to all of you. And I want you to know that your district commissioner, Commissioner Sorenson, is a very wealthy man. He's very connected to a lot of really important people and I know that he'll be sitting down with you as your district commissioner and doing everything he can, but just, you know, ask him to look at his checkbook. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
All right, so just take a moment, for example, for a moment. And, you know, there are opportunities for the city to consider living seawalls in the future construction of seawalls that we still have, you know, we still have yet to do. For example, around the Aquatic Center, we're planning to rebuild the seawall. And it certainly behooves us to consider starting to engage in the practice of constructing living seawalls rather than just the type that we have done in the past. And I think that as, you know, a tilt of the hat to these young folks who see their future in the actions that we take, that I think that, you know, we should consider going forward and trying to find opportunities to in fact, you know, install living seawall components and knowing that they are going to be beneficial to the waterways, to, as a buffer. We want to thank you folks for bringing this to our attention and I think the commission is very sensitive to the need that you described here today. So thank you once again, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for having us. This was definitely a great experience. Thank you for having us.
And while Mayor, as you're gathering-
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I think you want to, the gentleman, Marini.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The women didn't let you talk. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you for having us and giving us this opportunity.
You are welcome. You're welcome. As the photo is being taken, I just want to encourage the young people and also the staff at New River Middle School, continue to do what you're doing. You are on point. Your voice is being heard. And what I want them to remember, now is the time to do what you're doing. A lot of times in the past, we wait till we get 1824 to begin being advocates, but now is the time and I applaud you for what you're doing. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, we are the Eco Sharks.
I hear you.
Thanks for meeting us. Thank you.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Wait a minute, you gotta take another picture. Come on, squeeze tight. Come on, Ben.
Tight, tight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sorenson, you might as well remain standing because you will now be presenting a proclamation declaring April 15, 2025, regarding Stranahan High School Boys Basketball Team and the city of Fort Lauderdale. I'd like to invite Principal Nicola Stevenson-Gale, coaches Ed Schuler and Robinson Fan-Fan, and the mighty Dragons Boy Basketball Team. Come on up, guys.
Woo!
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Beasley Pittman, can you come down here? Because these are, a lot of the folks is from your district, go to Stranahan, so it's kind of, I feel like it's our shared school here.
These are tall boys.
State champs! State champs in the house! Woo! Wow! Look at these young men. Thank you, brother. It is so great to have you all here. Susan, thank you for making this possible. We've got, did the principal leave our, oh, there you are, good. I know you have another engagement, but principal, thank you for being here and for your leadership at Stranahan and for all you're doing in the community. Principal is relatively new to Stranahan High School, so we're so excited she's part of, part of this and part of the state championship team. So amazing, amazing work. So I'll read a proclamation, but these young men, about one minute left, right, coach? About one minute left, down by six points in the state championship, okay? Rallyed back, never doubted it. We get a missed shot, picking up my man right here, picking up the, getting the rebound, falling out of bounds, falling out of bounds, about to hit the baseline, passes it to my man right here, layup, wins the game last second, man, just amazing, amazing, amazing game. So, so let's read the proclamation here and then we're going to hand out awards to each of the team members. So there you go, Commissioner, thank you. So this is presented to Stranahan High School Boys Basketball Team, 2025 Class 4A Champions. Woo! Whereas the Stranahan High School Mighty Dragons demonstrated exceptional athleticism, resilience, and teamwork throughout the 2024-25 basketball season. On March 6, 2025, the Mighty Dragons secured a thrilling 63-62 victory over the Gibbs High School Gladiators in Lakeland, clinching this Florida High School Athletic Association Class 4A State Championship. The team delivered a dramatic comeback, as I mentioned, overcoming a six-point deficit in the final 32 seconds, so six points, 32 seconds, by sinking a clutch three-pointer, converting key free throws, and scoring the game-winning layup. This championship marks the fourth state title in Stranahan High School's history, with the previous championship in 2019, 2020, 2022, solidifying its legacy. All-stars. Under the leadership of head coach Edward Schuler, there you go, right here, thank you. And assistant coach Robinson Fan-Fan, not here. The team has exemplified sportsmanship, dedication, excellence, whereas the city of Fort Lauderdale is proud to recognize the Stranahan High School Boys Basketball Team. And we're going to name off the members right here. Commissioner Beasley Pittman, you want me to turn it over to you for you to call out the gentleman?
Start with the coach?
Yeah, start off with the coach, go ahead. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to read the first certificate. It says, "Certificate of Achievement Presented to Edward Schuler, Stranahan High School, in recognition of your outstanding performance and achievement as the 24-25 Class 4A State Boys Basketball Champions. Your exceptional skills, sportsmanship, and dedication has been a true inspiration to all of us. Congratulations on a well-deserved honor. Signed by our mayor, Dean Trentalles, April 15, 2025."
Edward.
Okay. This is for Robinson Fan-Fan who's not here, right? Okay. Isaiah Brown.
Isaiah, the game winner! The game winner! Chicken dinner!
Dee? DeVere? DeVere. Congratulations. Damari Foster? This is a little better, you're about, I can see eye to eye, thank you. I didn't mean it that way. I'm sorry, I felt a little more secure, I couldn't deal with the height, I'm sorry. I didn't mean it that way. Trey Hagel, is that right? Trey! Congratulations. Is that Prad Maurice? David Neely.
Don't break the paper, don't break the paper, don't break the paper.
Ezron Semenah? Semenah.
You can see eye to eye with him too.
And we have Kristen Jürgen.
And this is for principal.
Okay.
Thank you. By the way, they won on my birthday.
They won on your birthday! They won on principal's birthday. And this is also for you, Coach. This is a paperweight to the city of Fort Lauderdale. So it's something to remember us by. Coach or principal, I want to turn it over to you if you'd like to say any words.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Commission, all the dignitaries here. You know, we appreciate this. This is actually our fourth time here, so it's kind of getting light. You know, these young men, they're great young men, they're all juniors besides one senior, so we expect to be back here the next couple of years, so, yeah, one sophomore, I'm sorry, I'm a tenth grader. I want to thank Principal Gale.
The only thing that's changing each time is their hairstyles.
Correct. I want to thank, I want to thank Principal Gale, she's been very supportive- She's been very supportive since she came to Stranahan, and it's kind of good, feel good to do it for a new principal. I also want to give a big shout out to Coach Williams. Without him, we wouldn't be here. He started this, and I just carried on the legacy. So, we appreciate everything, okay? Go Dragons.
Guys, why don't you flip open your certificates so they can be seen? Yeah. Flip the thing back.
Hold it over. Hold it over. Hold it over. All right. All right, you guys ready? One, two, three.
Dragons!
Say Dragons. Say Mighty Dragons.
Mighty Dragons!
Thank you, team.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, Principal. And thank you, Howard Cosell, for the blow-by-blow action. Yeah, I know, I know. Too late. I would now like to invite Commissioner Pam Beasley-Pitman to present a proclamation regarding National Minority Health Month in the City of Fort Lauderdale. Commissioner. And I'd like to invite Dr. Aaron Johnson to the podium.
Okay. I didn't see you, doctor. I was like, where is he? Okay. Hello, it's good to see you.
He was on the football team.
Back in the day.
Back in the day.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Have the pleasure tonight to present this proclamation from the Office of the Mayor in recognition of National Minority Health Month requested by Commissioner Pam Beasley-Pitman. Whereas National Minority Health Month is observed each April to raise awareness about health disparities that continue to affect racial and ethnic minority populations and the observations of encouraging actions through health education, early detection, and disease prevention management. And whereas the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Office of Minority Health leads this annual observation and continues to promote healthy equity through national policies and programs. Whereas the 2025 theme, "Advancing Commitments to Eliminate Health Disparities," highlights the needs for substantial efforts and collaboration to improve health outcomes in underserved communities. And whereas National Minority Health Month provides a valuable opportunity to emphasize the importance of improving, improving the health of minority communities by addressing social deference of health, including education, housing, transportation, access to care, and economic stability. And whereas the City of Fort Lauderdale is committed to advancing health equality and fostering a culture of inclusion and well-being for all residents. This commitment is reflected in its support of policies and partnerships that strengthens community health and expands access to care. It also includes recognizing the contributions of healthcare professionals, including Dr. Aaron Johnson's, who efforts to support a more than just inclusive healthcare system. Now, therefore, we ask the city commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to hereby proclaim April 25 as National Minority Health Month in the City of Fort Lauderdale and encourages all residents to learn more about health disparities, support community health efforts, and promote wellness and equality in every neighborhood. It is signed this date, the 15th of April, 2025, by our Mayor Dean Trentellus. Let's give him a hand, and Mr. Aaron, I present this to you.
Thank you.
And you'd like a word?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Beasley-Pitman. You know, I grew up in Fort Lauderdale, and let me take it a step back. When I got a phone call, I saw 954-828, and I was like, did I pay my parking ticket? I was like, man, you know, the City of Fort Lauderdale don't play, they'll boot you, you know? But, you know, in all seriousness, this is, everyone in the audience is laughing because they know they've been there. Anyways, but in all seriousness, you know, it's definitely an honor to be raised by the city and be able to give back, you know? I was here during the times of Tater Town. Anybody remember that? I grew up in Sis Strong. You know, you know about that, OG, you know? And so, it's, you know, I became a pharmacist in the community. I was raised by the community, and it's definitely an honor to be able to give back. And so, creating these health equity programs, making sure that I'm working with the nonprofits, making sure that the unheard half of voice is really important. And so, I just want to thank everyone for being here and going to continue working with you, and let's keep pushing forward.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for being here tonight, and thank you for all your good work. I'd now like to invite Commissioner Glassman to present a proclamation regarding Arbor Day here in the City of Fort Lauderdale. And I'd like to invite Laura Thuley, our Urban Forester, from our Public Works Department, to join the Commissioner at the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. And, Doctor, hopefully when you come back next year, you'll be in better shape and can really represent what that proclamation's all about. But, thank you.
He's looking a little thin.
That's okay. Next year. You have a year to work out a little. It'll be good. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate this. Thank you for being here. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, City of Fort Lauderdale, in recognition of Arbor Day, April 25, 2025. Whereas Arbor Day has been observed throughout the United States for over 150 years, emphasizing the importance of conservation efforts. And whereas trees create a more sustainable environment by producing oxygen, cooling urban areas, and improving water quality and reducing stormwater impacts. And whereas trees play a crucial role in building healthier, safer, and more connected communities by providing shade, cooling cities by up to 10 degrees, and helping to prevent heat-related illnesses and deaths in urban areas. And whereas trees provide essential habitats for native and migratory birds, butterflies, and other wildlife, contributing to Fort Lauderdale's recognition as a certified community wildlife habitat by the National Wildlife Federation. And whereas the City of Fort Lauderdale has identified tree canopy coverage as a key sustainability metric in its 2029 Press Play Strategic Plan and has set a goal to increase tree canopy coverage to 33% by 2040, as outlined in the Advanced Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan. And whereas, in support of this goal, the city launched an Urban Forestry Master Planning Initiative in 2024 to engage residents and guide long-term canopy growth. Additionally, the city strengthened and enhanced its tree preservation ordinance, resulting in recognition from the Florida Urban Forestry Council for having an outstanding tree ordinance in 2025. And whereas these ongoing efforts have contributed to Fort Lauderdale's recognition as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation for 46 years due to its longstanding commitment to urban forestry. Now, therefore, we, as city commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Fort Lauderdale and encourage all residents to observe Arbor Day by planting trees to preserve and enhance our community's natural beauty and environmental health, dated this, the 15th day of April, 2025, and signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean J. Trentellus. Laura, want to say a few words? Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commission, dignitaries, I'd really like to thank you for this opportunity to recognize the urban forest. I know the proclamation recognized our award by the Florida Urban Forestry Council this year for an outstanding tree preservation ordinance, and I'd like to give a shout out to Al Battle for all his work on that. I know this is his last commission meeting, so I want to make sure, you know, we recognize his hard work on that. And I thank you all for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Laura, for all the good work you do for our city. Thank you. Our final presentation, it's my honor to present a proclamation declaring April 27, 2025, as Walk Like Mad and Mad Dash Day in the City of Fort Lauderdale in support of Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And I'd like to invite Heather Geronimus to please join me at the podium.
How are you, darling?
Thank you so much.
Can you bring a party with you?
Yes, we did. The DUI Task Force, the M.A.T.
Okay, wow. I'm in good company here. So, from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Fort Lauderdale, I hereby present this proclamation to Mothers Against Drunk Driving Broward, 2025, Walk Like Mad, Mad Dash. Whereas Walk Like Mad is the signature fundraising event of MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, the nation's premier organization dedicated to ending drunk driving, combating drugged driving, and supporting victims of these violent crimes and preventing underage drinking. Every 79 seconds, a person is injured in a drunk-driving crash, and drunk-driving fatalities continue to be a significant public safety concern here in the United States. Alcohol-related deaths have steadily increased nationwide, highlighting the ongoing need for education, awareness, and preventative measures. MAD Broward, established in 1980, provides vital victim support services, community education, and youth programs aimed at eliminating underage drinking throughout South Florida. On Sunday, April 27, 2025, MAD will host the UKG and SALLA Foundation Walk Like Mad and Mad Dash Fort Lauderdale 5K, presented by the Sheriff's Foundation of Broward County in downtown Fort Lauderdale on La Solas Boulevard. Funds raised from this event will support MAD Broward's ongoing community education initiatives, victim support services, and youth programs to prevent underage drinking. Finally, the mayor and the city commissioners remind everyone in Fort Lauderdale that unlike many other causes, drunk driving doesn't require a medical cure. The solution lies in awareness, education, and making responsible decisions by driving sober and designating a sober driver. Now, therefore, we, as city commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2025, as Walk Like Mad and Mad Dash Day in the City of Fort Lauderdale. Encourage all members of the community to participate in this important event and commit to responsible decision-making to prevent impaired driving. Signed, this 15th day of April, 2025, by myself, Mayor Dean Trentellus. Congratulations, Heather. Want to say a few words? Please step up. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Trentellus, and to the commission. It's really an honor to be here with all of you and to be able to invite everyone in the community to attend Walk Like Mad and Mad Dash Fort Lauderdale. I know Commissioner Sorenson will be there pumping up the crowd, which you all know he does so well, but we need everyone to.
We'll give you running the 5K.
I mean, I think he has to.
A walk, a walk quickly is what I'll do.
A brisk, a brisk walk?
Brisk.
Brisk, very brisk. So, you know, it really takes all of us. Drunk driving is, as we said, a 100% preventable crime, and the reason that I brought this event to Fort Lauderdale is in 2009, that crime impacted my family. My father, Dr. Robert Geronimus, who was a physician here in Broward County, was struck and killed in a car on pedestrian DUI hit-and-run in Miami, and MAD helped me when no one else could. But we really want to meet people before tragedy occurs. We want to meet them downtown on an amazing day. But as I reflect on what we've done here, we've raised over $4 million. We've seen thousands of people cross the finish line. We've also really created a year-round movement that culminated in our DUI Task Force in Fort Lauderdale. We didn't have that 14 years ago, so I'm really excited to be here with Sergeant Thomas and his DUI Task Force that's out there protecting the City of Fort Lauderdale from drunk driving every day. So, let's give a round to them. And let's all get together on Sunday, April 27, and drunk driving together. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you. Anyone else want to say anything? Anyone else want to say anything? Okay. Come this way. Stand in front of the.
Thank you so much.
No, you got it, you got it. Crowded. Do we have a universal?
Always a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, great.
Thank you so much, everybody, and I appreciate your patience in participating in this opportunity to recognize these folks. So, at this point, we'll move on to the agenda. The agenda consists of consent items and then resolutions and various ordinances, and tonight I will ask each member of the commission if they're interested in pulling any of these consent agenda items to be discussed and voted on separately. No one has signed up to speak on any of the consent agenda items, so other than the ones that will be pulled, the others will be voted on at one time. So, Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Mayor, do you have any consent agenda items that you'd like to pull?
None.
None. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
None.
Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
None.
Okay, so, do I hear a motion to approve all the consent agenda items?
Moved.
Seconded.
They're moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, and that motion is now approved. Moving on to resolutions, R1, Appointment of Board and Committee Members. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the names into the record?
Yes. For the May 6, 2025 Resolution, Beach Business Improvement District Advisory Committee, Ryan Kopp, he's a primary member for Hotel Maron. Nesley Lauren, alternate member, Hotel Maron. Cody Bertone, primary member for the W Fort Lauderdale Beach. Robert Lockley, Conrad, Fort Lauderdale Beach Resort. And then Veronica Melanova, also as the alternate member for Conrad Fort Lauderdale Beach Resort. And for Board of Adjustment, Jay Sheckman, for alternate position nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And for tonight's resolution, Education Advisory Board, Heather Brinkworth, nominated by Vice Mayor Herbst. Historic Preservation Board, Tim Chivone, nominated by Commissioner Beasley-Pitman. Insurance Advisory Board, David Cooley, nominated by Vice Mayor Herbst. Marine Advisory Board, Barry Flanagan, nominated by Vice Mayor Herbst. Robert Lockley, Conrad, Fort Lauderdale Beach Resort. And then Veronica Melanova, also as the alternate member for Conrad, Fort Lauderdale Beach Resort. And for Board of Adjustment, Jay Sheckman for alternate position nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And for tonight's resolution, Education Advisory Board, Heather Brinkworth nominated by Vice Mayor Herbst. Historic Preservation Board, Tim Chivone nominated by Commissioner Beasley-Pitman. Insurance Advisory Board, David Cooley nominated by Vice Mayor Herbst. Marine Advisory Board, Barry Flanagan nominated by Vice Mayor Herbst. Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Redevelopment Board, Lisa Crawford nominated by Mayor Trantellus. Sustainability Advisory Board, Christian Luz nominated by Vice Mayor Herbst. And we received a couple nominations after publishing. Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Fiona Johnson nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And for Planning and Zoning Board, John Rodstrom nominated by Vice Mayor Herbst, and that rounds it out.
Okay. Any other modifications or additions? Okay, there are none. Do I hear a resolution to...
Mayor, I'd like to have a discussion before, or do you want a resolution moved? Or how do you want to handle this?
Well, someone like to introduce a resolution?
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced. Do I hear... Okay, now...
Yes, I'd like to pull one of those names for discussion.
Sure. Which name is that?
Was it John Rodstrom for Planning and Zoning?
Okay, he introduced the resolution?
He introduced the resolution.
So...
So the resolution's been introduced, and we now have discussion. So what is your, what are your comments?
Well, I'm going to object to this nomination for the Planning and Zoning Board for several reasons. Number one, Planning and Zoning Board is probably one of the most, if not the most important and stringent boards in the city with incredible responsibility. I will say that the person that's being nominated for this position is a lobbyist. We've had several discussions about lobbyists being appointed to boards, especially Planning and Zoning Board. This is not the first time we're having this discussion. I will also mention that the nominee is not only a lobbyist, but what concerned me, and I serve several terms on the Planning and Zoning Board, but when we were discussing the construction of the fort in Fort Lauderdale, which is a pickleball facility that has received worldwide attention, we were all in receipt of many, many letters because Mr. Rodstrom was the attorney of record opposing that project in our city. And the responses from our city attorney's office to all of the allegations from Mr. Rodstrom demonstrated to me that there was a clear misunderstanding of our code, of our ULDR. I don't know how you can serve on the Planning and Zoning Board when you do not understand the ULDR, the code. I will also like to add to this conversation the fact that Mr. Rodstrom was a highly-paid political agent, manager, consultant, advisor, whatever you want to call it, for three of the campaigns in our city this past November. Commissioner Herbst, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Herbst, Charlotte Rodstrom, and also Kevin Cochran, that was District 1, District 2, and District 4. This is just not the right choice for the city's Planning and Zoning Board. I will also say that many times during the last year, I've had many people, I don't really go on Nextdoor, I don't really go on a lot of these social media sites, but I will tell you that what was sent to me were clear violations of our code of conduct in terms of board members, in terms of committee members and task force members. There are numerous examples of that throughout the last entire year where not, you know, and by the way, I just want to say that criticism is fine. I can understand criticism, I can understand debate, I can understand differences of opinion, but it's the way one chooses one's words, it is the way one expresses him or herself, it is the way one criticizes. I found the items that were sent to me from social media very, very offensive. I personally also was a recipient of a threatening letter from Mr. Rodstrom defamation during a campaign. It was ridiculous, and none of it had any merit, but again, this is part of a pattern. I read very disparaging, very disparaging words about the mayor, about Commissioner Sorenson, who was a candidate at the time, and myself, over and over and over. I can go on, but these are basically the highlights of why I am opposing this nomination. There are so many excellent people in our city that can serve, that are not lobbyists, that are not political agents, that are not campaign managers, that are not writing repeatedly on social media in the most offensive way, and I just think that we can do better. And I'm going to oppose this, and I would hope that the Commission would understand. This sets a very bad example for what we're doing in terms of who we're appointing and why. Again, I'm going to go back to my original claim that I think you need to demonstrate an understanding of code and ULDR to serve on planning and zoning. I have not seen that, and I have many evidences of all of these writings. That's about in a nutshell, Mayor. So I'm going to ask, I don't know what the process is now that a resolution's been introduced, but I'm going to ask that that nomination be pulled from the other names that are in front of us.
So Mayor, I'd like to respond to that, if I may. So yes, Mr. Rodstrom is an attorney, and as you are, Mayor, and as we all know, an attorney is intended to advocate vigorously on behalf of their client. Doesn't necessarily mean that we have to like what they say, that is, their job is to advocate vigorously for the position of their client. Courts are where we decide whether the attorney's viewpoint is right or not. It's not up for us here on the dais to second-guess what attorneys have in their opinions or in their motions. That's not our job. That's what the job of a judge is for. And so I don't take anything away from Mr. Rodstrom for advocating on behalf of the residents down in District 4 that were opposed to the pickleball courts. I don't think that detracts from him. In fact, I thought his arguments were actually very well-placed. In fact, he brought forward the fact that there was a deed restriction on the park that nobody was aware of. I think we ought to be commended for that. In fact, I took a strong exception to our city attorney's, previous city attorney's opinion that we could ignore the deed restriction simply because there was no successor in interest that could enforce it against us. I thought that was morally bankrupt, quite frankly. And to the comments about his postings on social media, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Glassman. He has made comments on social media prior to his becoming an individual who was being asked to be appointed to a position, and our code of conduct does not apply to individuals in the community, they apply to people who are appointed to the boards. So I don't think we can go back and look at anybody's social media history going back to, you know, when they were in college and see what they've posted and who they've said things about. I don't think that's appropriate. Again, I'll raise the same issue that I raised during our last time when it was deemed inappropriate for my choice for this position, and that is that First Amendment allows folks to make comments about politicians. That's what the First Amendment is for. It is to allow people to criticize their government, and he was doing that, and he's perfectly within his rights to criticize his government when he thinks they're doing things that are not consistent with the values of the community, and I don't take that against anybody. And to the last comment about lobbyists, I will point out to you that we have several lobbyists currently serving on city boards. So apparently, it's only a problem when we don't like the particular lobbyist. So this picking and choosing lobbyists, to me, is highly questionable. And again, I will raise the same issue I raised last time. We either respect the choices of a district commissioner for somebody that lives in his district and represents the district for these positions, or we don't.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Mayor. Dwayne, are we, are you working on the potential ordinance that would not allow lobbyists to serve on city boards?
Our office has a draft, a draft ordinance that mimics Broward County, which bars members of boards and committees from lobbying the city and its departments.
That's not the question.
Yeah, that's...
That's not the question. The question is, can a registered lobbyist...
He asked, he asked me if I, if we have the ordinance.
No, but that's, that's an ordinance whether or not a lobbyist can lobby the Commission. He's saying, can a lobbyist sit on an advisory board?
No, I, yeah.
Presently, yes.
Presently, I know they can, yeah. So when is that ordinance coming to us?
Can bring it next month.
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, I continue to object to have, I don't think any lobbyist should be on any city boards. I think the lobbyists that are on city boards should be removed from city boards, and I think we should not appoint any lobbyists to city boards. So I object to any lobbyist serving on any city board. I think it's a direct conflict of interest and not good for our, for city's representation. Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, if I might just add something, just to respond to Commissioner Herbst. I am not saying that folks do not have the ability to criticize the government or elected officials. I'm fine with all of that. Again, it's the way in which you choose your words, it's the way in which you personally attack or disparage. I will tell you, I'm all for freedom of speech and the First Amendment, but if you look around the world, I'll give just an example, in Germany, we have several people in our city that like to post things about each of us as individuals or as a city. In Germany, you would be arrested for what some of these things that I've seen written about us on social media, especially the words of this person that's in front of us for a nomination to one of the city's most important boards, the Planning and Zoning Mr. Rodstrom's writings have demonstrated a clear, clear understanding of not wanting to see so many of the things that have happened in our city happen. I think that his bias is clear. I have a hard time believing that he would be objective. I have a hard time believing that that is a good choice for the Planning and Zoning. Again, it is the way in which one criticizes, it's the way in which one talks about an elected official, it's the way in which one disagrees, and I believe that that kind of disagreement, that kind of public discourse, it's easy to sit behind your phone or your computer and just type away, but there are consequences to that, and elections have consequences, actually. And I would just say that we can do better, and that I just find it offensive to read everything that I've read in the last year and then say that I'm fine with appointing this person to a city board. That's all. Thank you.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this is becoming a monthly, weekly, whenever we meet for a commission, this is becoming a conversation. Prior to, I'm gonna say this term that we're in right now, this conversation about lobbyists, and I'll go back to the previous term, when did it become an issue for lobbyists to be on our committees? Is this, is this been a ordinance? Has it been a conversation before the last four years? What has shifted, caused this conversation to say that we do not, well, we do not want lobbyists, we are now deciding from this position that the commissioner who is recommending and nominating an individual from our city, that others don't deem them worthy of the position? So there's two questions, again. When did it become a problem that we have lobbyists on our advisory boards or committees? Because I'm, I'm thinking before this, this new culture that we're sitting in, they were there, if anyone can answer that question for me.
I don't know the answer to your question. Does anyone want to respond to that?
Who would know?
I think, Dwayne, when was the first request made to? I believe, actually, it was the last commission that brought that forward to have an ordinance in front of us. It wasn't not even this commission, it was the previous commission, correct? And what was the date?
It was an issue with regard to the Charter Revision Board, which I know that you and/or I had requested during one of the joint sessions that that be something that they recommended to us to put on the ballot as to whether or not lobbyists should be permitted, but nothing ever materialized because none of the recommendations ever made it to the, to the commission for final approval. So, so I think now that, now that I'm recalling the, the history...
Okay.
So Commissioner, I believe it was prior to the election that the issue was brought up, and that we did talk about it during the Charter Review, Charter Revision Board workshop that we had, that the issue of lobbyists serving on boards was, was questioned.
But Mr. Spence's office wouldn't be working on an ordinance to, back to the question from Commissioner Sorenson when he asked, when are we going to see that ordinance? That would not have been something that I think the attorney's office would have been working on if indeed we had not requested it, correct?
Yes, that request was made, if you recall, at a commission meeting, there was a discussion about the lobbyists and the ability to serve on boards. I provided a memorandum, an example of prohibitions from other municipalities that are provided to the commission via email. So in January is when we were actually directed to look at creating a ordinance that addressed the prohibition. But during that discussion, and we can have this discussion when the ordinance comes forward in our recommendation, that we recommended following the model that Broward County has, which is not exactly a prohibition against lobbyists being appointed, but it is a prohibition against individuals who are appointed to boards lobbying the city, our own entity.
Right, which is, which is another issue, but not the one that Commissioner Sorenson wants, was addressing.
Yeah, I think our ordinance should be even more comprehensive than that, but we can talk about that when it comes.
Right, and I thought our, that discussion back then, we were kind of clear about some of the First Amendment issues that we thought were of, of importance, and we can, we can recirculate the memorandum and have that discussion when we bring forward the language that we, we think would meet and address some of the concerns that the commission has.
Commissioner Sorenson, may I ask a question relating to...
Sure.
...to your position?
Yep.
So just, so I'm clear. I think it might help clarify my understanding. Is your objection, and I'm going to lay out several scenarios here, and I'd like you to kind of consider each one of them separately, if you would, is your objection to anybody who has ever served in any capacity as a lawyer in their profession, I'm sorry, as a lobbyist in their professional career?
So a lawyer is not a lobbyist?
I'm sorry, a lawyer's a lobbyist, so I've got Mr. Lockery in the back of the room, who's a lawyer slash lobbyist. Many of our lawyers are considered lobbyists under Broward County's lobbyist definitions these days, so you may come as a land use lawyer, and we consider you to be a lobbyist. They consider themselves to be lawyers, we define them as lobbyists. So is it anybody who has ever been a lobbyist during the course of their professional practice in Broward County?
Are you asking what I'd like the ordinance to be?
Well, when you're saying you don't want lobbyists, I want to, I want to be clear as to what you consider a lobbyist. Anybody who has ever...
A lobbyist?
Let me, perhaps, maybe this is...
Yeah, go ahead.
Should it be anybody who has ever been a lobbyist? Is it somebody who is a lobbyist today, or should it be like the resign-to-run law, where they can't be a lobbyist and a board member at the same time? So if they're appointed tonight and they don't take their seat until June, they have an opportunity to step down as a lobbyist and withdraw as a lobbyist, and therefore they will no longer be a lobbyist on the day that they're on a board? So three scenarios, right? I've been one in the past, but I'm not one now. I'm one now, but I won't be one in two weeks. Or you don't want them to be a lobbyist at the time they are serving on the board. So three scenarios. Which, which of those do you find amenable?
Good questions. I'm happy to kind of noodle through that, and, you know, we can talk further about it. Yeah, all good ideas.
Well, and the reason I ask that is, you know, I don't want to preclude somebody who maybe 10 years ago lobbied once and doesn't lobby anymore and may want to serve on a city board. I mean, it certainly excludes a lot of folks in the city.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I'd say, you know, one, one idea to consider is, I think, current or recent, someone who's currently or recently involved as a lobbyist is, is a concern of mine, absolutely. Does that, does that help? What are you thinking?
So then, when I look at, at Mr. Rodstrom, he is not currently a lobbyist. So would that, would that eliminate your concern, then?
No, I said currently or recently. Did you catch recently?
What would, so what would define recently?
Yeah, I don't know.
Days, months, weeks, years?
Hey, love where you're heading on this, and love to keep this conversation when we get the ordinance going. Like, we can really dig into this. So recently is kind of a, a general term. So it looks like, I'm looking at the city lobbyist registry, and it looks like John, and by the way, I like John. John and I work together very closely on homelessness. He's a great part of Salvation Army, so it's, it's not a personal, it's a professional concern. So, you know, he's a, he was lobbying in 2024, so that's, that's an example of recent, Commissioner, Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, great. So what happens next? Dwayne, what do we need?
So what I, what I really kind of like to understand now is, so I believe now I'm the vice mayor, so I'm running the, the meeting.
Get the gavel, get the gavel.
I get the gavel.
Get the gavel, start hitting some things.
So what, what I think I'd like to understand...
What are you thinking?
So, so then, when I look at, at, at Mr. Rodstrom, he is not currently a lobbyist. So would that, would that eliminate your concern then?
No, I said currently or recently. Did you catch recently?
What would, so what would define recently?
Yeah, I don't know.
Days, months, weeks, years?
Hey, love where you're heading on this and love to keep this conversation when we get the ordinance going. Like, we can really dig into this. So recently is kind of a, a general term. So it looks like, I'm looking at the city lobbyist registry, and it looks like John, and by the way, I like John. John and I work together very closely on homelessness. He's a great part of Salvation Army. So it's, it's not a personal, it's a professional concern. So, you know, he's a, he was lobbying in 2024. So that's, that's an example of recent, Commissioner, Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, great. So what happens next? Dwayne, what do we need?
So what I, what I really kind of like to understand now is, so I believe now I'm the vice mayor, so I'm running the, the meeting.
Get the gavel, get the gavel. Get the gavel, start hitting some things.
So what, what I think I'd like to understand a little bit more about this is, when we talk about the ordinance that you're going to put together, what does that ordinance look like?
So Broward County has an ordinance on their books that prohibits any advisory board or other board member from lobbying or engaging in lobbying activities with a county, division, department, or related or affiliated with the advisory board. So it's tailored to address the concern of appointees improperly using the influence of their appointment, their role as an appointed member to the board to influence county staff or the staff that's directly related to the agency that they're with. And I believe the discussion started with Tom Mansbruck previously with regards to lobbying, and I would recirculate his memo and the memo that we've produced on the subject. We did have the concern with regards to the constitutional rights of individuals to be able to.
My brief career is over, Mayor. Gone in all of one minute. That's it. My, my brief career as mayor in charge is, is, you know? It happened. I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
So, so the general concern is that there is too broad of a prohibition that stops anyone who, for example, who's engaged in lobbying the state or lobbying federal government from participating on our boards and committees. And in that case, they think that would be overly broad in that sense. It, it, there are some concerns with regards to the infringement on their ability to exercise their, their rights to petition their government, even if it's for compensation. Because the definition of lobby, which we adopted Broward County definition of lobbyists, includes this activity either compensated or without compensation.
It's overbroad in that respect, I, I think, having read it. But let me ask you a question about that, because I've read the Broward County definition, and it talks about principally or primarily engaged in lobbying. Right? So if you're a lawyer, Mr. Lockery back there, I get to pick on you right now. One of my favorite lawyers. If you're a lawyer, and let's say your practice is primarily litigation, right? And you're retained by somebody who has an issue with the city, and you come up and speak before the city commission, you have to register as a lobbyist when you come before the city commission at that point. I believe that's how our system currently works, right? So if you come to a commission meeting and you speak on behalf of your client, you're, you're, you're registering as a lobbyist, even though you're in fact representing them perhaps in litigation or other legal matters. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. So if you're representing somebody one time in front of the commission once, you've got to register as a lobbyist, even though your primary practice is not engaged in lobbying? Your primary practice is?
Unless you meet one of the exceptions that the, the definition excludes from the term lobbyist. So if you're advocating on behalf of yourself, or if you're advocating for, for example, your homeowners association, that's one of the exceptions that.
But no, using, using my, using my example as a, as an attorney, representing somebody in litigation, and you come and speak to the commission on behalf of your client, but you're not primarily engaged in the practice of lobbying, you are occasionally. Occasionally engaged in the practice of lobbying or on a one-off practice lobbying one time. Help me understand.
Well, no, it meets the definition of lobbying.
Okay.
Or lobbying activity.
Okay. So if you've ever once come before the city commission on behalf of a client, you are now a lobbyist for life?
Sounds like a sentence.
It does, it does. Well.
I don't know about the lobbyist for life.
Once a lobbyist, always a lobbyist. Okay, I, I just want to be clear.
But that, but that would constitute lobbying activity, yes.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. I'm, I'm done with my questions. Thank you.
Okay. We have one person who signed up to speak, Barbara Stern.
Thank you, Barbara Stern, proud resident of Vice Mayor Herbst's district. Here today to talk about the appointments to the boards. And I'm actually glad, or surprised, I guess, on this conversation regarding Johnny Rodstrom and whether or not he's a lobbyist, because I was actually going to come in here and ask the commission if we discriminate against men versus women, because we keep hearing that women can't serve on boards if they're lobbyists. But Russ Clennett is a lobbyist who serves on a board. Ben, you just appointed Bobby DeBose to serve on a board. He, based upon knowledge, information, and belief, lobbied in Lauderdale just recently. Ben, Steve, and, and the mayor, you all voted to put Chris Smith on a board. Chris Smith has stood before this very commission and lobbied on behalf of the soccer stadium. So three men can serve on boards as lobbyists. And two women were presented, one was falsely accused of being a lobbyist, and I was falsely accused of other things, but we have said that a woman could not be on there. So tonight, we talked about a man who has lobbied. So thank goodness the city is not discriminating against women, as I originally thought. But as long as we're delving into these issues and we're looking at conflicts of interest and what should be considered, I really hope that the commission would consider whether a realtor should serve on the Planning and Zoning Board, because they are voting on projects that eventually they may get the rights to represent them as a realtor and make money off of those very deals. So as long as we're considering ethical issues, I would urge the commission to consider that ethical issue. We've also talked about people shouldn't be on boards if they've been involved in campaigns. We currently have somebody who served as a treasurer for a number of you, serving on the Planning and Zoning Board. That person is okay. By the way, that person ought to put their hands on a commissioner at an event. That person also made disparaging remarks about a commissioner. So we seem to have selective enforcement of these beliefs. When it comes to Vice Mayor Herbst's desires, we say no. When it comes to Commissioner Beasley Pittman's desires, we say no. But to everybody else, it's okay. So I just hope that the commission has some consistency in their votes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, you have an amendment to your, to your list that you made.
Yeah, we're also, just due to, we've got to look up one of the nominations, Northwest Progressive Flagler Heights, Lisa Crawford. She'll come back for further consideration at another meeting.
Right, so that comes off the list tonight.
That one's gonna come off for the list today.
Right, okay. All right, so there's a, there's a resolution's been introduced for the names that were mentioned by the clerk. And if there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Just some clarification. So this is, the entire list as presented?
Minus Lisa Crawford that I am pulling. Because, because it was a misunderstanding. I don't, I did not reappoint her.
But this list is including Mr. Rodstrom on Planning and Zoning?
Just to include, yes.
Yeah, so it's as amended, correct?
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here, too, and made a part here of Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
No.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
No.
Mayor Trent Talis?
No. Would someone like to introduce another resolution?
Yes, I would like to introduce all of those names minus Mr. Rodstrom for Planning and Zoning.
All right. Is there anyone else wish to speak on this item? There being none?
So clarify, you're introducing your resolution approving all of those names?
Approving all the names less Mr. Rodstrom. And less the one that?
And less, right, and less Lisa Crawford. Okay. Thank you. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here, too, and made a part here of Vice Mayor Herbst?
No.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
I'm gonna say no. This is, this is crazy what we're doing. No.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes. And those individuals will now be eligible to serve on those boards or committees, and we want to thank you all for your commitment to our community. Moving forward on R2.
I'm sorry. Before we move on.
Yes?
Dwayne, you said that we can expect the ordinance draft next meeting, or you have a projected date for that ordinance?
I didn't have a projected date, but I can put it on for next meeting if, if that's the pleasure of the commission. It's, it's completed. But in terms of, I, I don't think I have a clear consensus in terms of what the expectation of that is. I'd like to at least bring it back as a conference item for the next meeting, if that, that, if that's okay with you all.
I agree for a conference item, because we need to, this needs to be clarified, because it's definitely going in a different direction than what has been well-established practice. I don't, I don't understand what's going on. It seems like to me that it's been decided that now we're going to cherry pick who commissioners can appoint and not be in. Because isn't, help me out here. Isn't there something that says that something, sometimes it has to be a consensus, other times we, we vote in these, off these individuals that we want on these boards? Isn't there some type of verdict that goes along with this?
There are, it depends on the board.
Right.
So there are some committees that, as far as the criteria for the board member or committee member that's appointed, it can be a consensus appointment, but there is nothing that spells out that each commissioner has necessarily right. This has just been kind of custom in practice that each commissioner, unless the, the individual resolution that sets up the board establishes a right for the commissioner to nominate, they're, have a right to nominate a member of the board.
Okay. My concern, again, is the fact that my opportunity to nominate someone is now being questioned by other commissioners that may not know what's best for my district, and then also sliding the opportunity for the city overall. Also, with that being said, I do not believe that, I'm gonna say personal. This is becoming personal. What I'm, what I'm viewing is like a tit for tat, and we need to be able to work together to do what we need to do to make sure that our committees, our advisory boards are working together. The advisory board, the point of them is to represent the city. The demographics need to look and think like the city, not necessarily the commission. And what is going on, to me, it seems like we're slanting towards directions that we want to see committees lean towards. I don't want a lobbyist on this, on this committee, because I believe that that particular lobbyist is gonna lean in a different way, way that I may not agree with. Even down to opportunities where our neighbors are free speech, they have that opportunity to express themselves. I may not like what you say about me. I may not like what you say about the dice of the city, but at the same time, they have a right to express themselves. And we've seen that on the flip side, where commissioners from this district, I mean, from this commission, they put out open letters defaming other people of the city. So what's the difference? We need to get a balance. It needs to be corrected. So however we need to get there, I'm willing, and I'm thinking, all of us are willing to get there. I'm hoping we are. I'm hoping that I'm on a commission that believes in things that are right and not funky, because this is getting real funky. It stinks. Okay?
And, and I'd like, I'd like to add to that, because I'll take you all back a couple of years when, when some of the folks in this community that, that, that hold themselves out as leaders of this community attacked me personally, accused me of being an insurrectionist. Those folks serve on city boards right now. Have I objected to that? People defamed me? They attacked me? They attacked me in the press? They attacked me to the commission? And have I said anything? No. I've let these people serve on city boards. I've not objected to former candidates for office. I've not objected to former political operatives. I've let all this go by, because I believe in the practice and the process the city commission has followed for decades. But apparently, we don't do that anymore. Shame, as I believe one of my former commissioners said, one of my commissioners said in a former meeting one time. Shame.
Okay, any further comments? All right. Moving on to R2, Resolution Reaffirming, our Resolution Number 24-280, and the construction of a tunnel is a locally preferred alternative for the commuter rail train crossing the New River in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and acknowledging city efforts to advance the tunnel concept and rescission of any other conflicting resolutions, provisions, and an effective date. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced. No one has signed up to speak. Okay, please call the roll.
Oh, Mayor, can we, can I just talk about it?
Oh, yeah, go right in. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Mayor, so I think we're heading in a great direction. Partnership with the county continues to go really well here. In talking with Mayor Fur and the county staff, they just, they've, they've reviewed the resolution, and I asked them, Mayor, if they could just give me any feedback, if they feel like anything to adjust or suggestions they might have to this. And they feel very good about it. Their only suggestion, Mayor, is just, and it's one that I'm comfortable with making this, and just minor adjustment. It's Section 6, if you would, which is page 3, Section 6. The second sentence says, "The city acknowledges that after October 1st, 2025, the county may elect, without the support of the city commission, to include a bridge crossing of the New River as part of its locally preferred alternative for a Broward commuter rail north." Their ask, and, and my ask, is could we remove the, without the support of the city commission? Because my view, Mayor, is just removing that does not limit our ability to not support the bridge if and when we so choose at any point.
Well, why have Section 6 at all?
The Section 6, I think they, you know, I think they like having the date in there, but I'm good.
Why don't we, sort of, why don't we just, you know, say the city acknowledges?
Sure.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know why, why that's even in there.
Let's take out the whole section.
Because they, I could take out the whole thing.
Do it. I'm good.
So.
So to clarify, so you're removing Section 6 completely, or do you want to keep that first sentence that says the city commission agrees to collaborate?
Why don't we keep the first sentence that the city commission agrees to collaborate with the county, Board of County Commissioners to, on a viable tunnel alternative and report on progress, period?
Okay.
I think that's, that's what you really want to say. Is that your resolution? Is that the resolution?
Yeah, I love it. Great, yes.
So that's the resolution as amended?
Yes, as amended.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, reaffirming Resolution Number 24-280, and the construction of a tunnel as the locally preferred alternative for the commuter rail train crossing the New River in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, acknowledging city efforts to advance the tunnel concept and the rescission of any other conflicting resolution provisions and an effective date. Vice Mayor Herbst? Commissioner Glassman?
Oops, sorry. Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes. And that resolution's approved. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. PH 1. So PH 1, PH 2, PH 3 have each been requested a deferment to May 6. Do we need a resolution for that? How do we want to do that?
If you can do a motion for each.
All right, do a motion for each. Okay. PH 1's request to defer to May 6. Do I hear a motion to defer PH 1? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll on the motion to defer PH 1.
Vice Mayor Herbst? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes. PH 2, do I hear a motion to defer to May 6, 2025?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll on the motion to defer to May 6.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes. And that's been deferred to May 6. PH 3, do I hear a motion to defer to May 6? PH 3, do I hear a motion to defer to May 6?
So moved.
Been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes. And PH 3 has now been deferred to May 6. PH 4, Public Hearing Quayside Judicial Ordinance Rezoning from Residential Single Family Low/Medium Density RS 8 to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use West District. This is at 439 Northwest 13th Avenue. The applicant is the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. No one has signed up to speak. Someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll on the motion.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and public hearing on PH 4 is now closed. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll.
An ordinance amending Section 47-1.6. B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale in Schedule A revised compilation attached here to and by reference made a part thereof, so as to rezone from residential single family low medium density district to northwest regional activity center mixed use west district, all of lots 7 and 8, block 4, first addition to Tuskegee Park, according to the plot thereof as recorded in Plot Book 9, Page 65 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, located south of Sistrunk Boulevard, east of northwest 14th Avenue, west of northwest 13th Avenue, and north of northwest 5th Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and that ordinance is now approved. PH 5, Public Hearing Quayside Judicial Ordinance approving the vacation of a right-of-way for a 40-foot wide by 525-foot-long portion of northeast 6th Terrace right-of-way. This is regarding the YMCA Broward Health. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, expert, excuse me, communications or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, Vice Mayor Herbst, I have to get used to that now. Vice Mayor Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
I'm sorry.
PH 5, do you have any disclosures?
I've met with Broward Health multiple times and with Cheryl, YMCA folks multiple times.
Okay, Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes, Cheryl Woods and members of the YMCA staff.
And I met with Cheryl Woods. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, Cheryl Woods, yesterday, Monday, April 14.
Okay, and Commissioner Sorenson?
Cheryl Woods.
Okay. So the two people that signed up to speak are for questions only, and so otherwise, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll on the motion to close public hearing.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and public hearing on PH 5 is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll.
An ordinance vacating a portion of that certain 40-foot right-of-way lying between blocks 251, 252 Progresso, according to the plot thereof as recorded in Plot Book 2, Page 18, of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located west of northeast 7th Avenue, north of northeast 8th Street, east of North Federal Highway, and south of northeast 9th Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and PH 5 is now approved. Moving on to ordinances of second reading, OSR 1, this is second reading ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Code of Ordinances, Section 8-146.1, to address water taxi stops on rights of way and other city property fronting a waterway, along with delegation of staff authority to declare water taxi stops. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced. Any questions? No one's signed up to speak? Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Code of Ordinances, Section 8-146.1, to address water taxi stops on right-aways and other city property fronting a waterway, along with delegation of staff authority providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, codification correction of scrivener errors, and an effective date. Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and OSR 1 is now approved on second reading. OSR 2, second reading, an ordinance amending the city's Unified Land Development Regulations, Section 47-24, Table 1, Development Permits and Procedures. This is regarding Uptown Urban Village Zoning Districts and Parking Reductions and Exemptions. No one has signed up to speak? Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, Section 47-24, entitled Table 1, Development Permits and Procedures, Approval Process for Development Permits in Uptown Urban Village Zoning Districts, amending Article 13, Additional Zoning Districts, Section 47-37B, entitled Uptown Urban Village Zoning Districts, applicability and general regulations, list of permitted and conditional uses, table of dimensional requirements for the urban uptown village zoning districts, urban uptown village special regulations, and amending Section 47-20.3, entitled Parking Reductions and Exemptions, to permit parking reductions in uptown urban village zoning districts, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, codification and correction of scrivener errors, and an effective date. Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and OSR 2 is now approved on second reading. OSR 3, second reading, an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, Section 47-39, Development Regulations for Annexed Areas to Update Height, Measurement, and Definition Requirements. We have one person signed up to speak, but only to say that they are in support of this. Where's Eric? There you are, hi Eric. So anyone else which to speak on this item? There being none, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Section 47-39.8.2, entitled Definitions and Measurements in Section 47-39.8.2, Annexed Areas of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Unified Land Development Regulations, Providing for Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinance Provisions, Codification and Correction of Scrivener Errors, and an Effective Date. Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and OSR 3 is now approved on second reading. We have one walk-on. This is a motion delegating authority to the city manager to approve, in her discretion, a cosponsorship of the Florida Panthers 2025 Playoffs Baptist Health Isplex Events and permitting the use of city-owned utility poles for the display and placement of event banners for a period of longer than 30 days. Someone like to move the item?
Moved. Second.
Been seconded. You all have a chance to read the walk-on item?
Yes.
Okay.
Just for the record, I know it's in our walk-on document, but the Florida Panthers are responsible for the costs, all costs associated with this request, with the banners.
Yes, with the banners and any associated events.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, the items are moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and this item has now been approved. Madam City Manager, is there any further business to the commission?
Bless you. Mayor, I have one other item.
Okay, one, oh, you have another item?
Yeah.
Sure.
That's all right. So county has reached out to me. They're appreciative of what we did with the resolution. They're having one more ask. If you'd indulge me for a moment, is they're asking for some acknowledgement in the resolution in Section 6 where it says, "The city acknowledges that after October 1st, 2025, the county may elect to include a bridge crossing as part of its LPA." They're asking if that can be included.
I thought we got rid of that section.
We got rid of that section, and they're asking if...
I hate to think that we're taking direction from the county commission now. I mean, this is our resolution.
It is our resolution. I've asked them for feedback, so this is their ask. It's fine if you don't want to do it, I'm good. I'm not going to, okay, all right.
You know, Ben, and I know you're trying to find areas of cooperation with them.
I am.
But I have yet to see the county saying that, hey, city, let's partner with you in making this happen. And that is, I have never seen anything, oh.
What's Syria?
That's the county calling you, Mayor. The county's calling you.
Okay, I'm good. We can wrap up the meeting, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.